I am Phil Mendelson, Chairman of the Council and Chair of the Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, May 15, 2014. The time is 4:21 in the afternoon. We are in Room 500, the council chambers of the Johnny Wilson Building. This is an additional meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the sole purpose of considering the report recommendations of the Committee of the Whole on the Fiscal Year 2015 Budget and Corresponding Budget Support Act. This is what many of us call the Little Committee of the Whole because we're dealing with only that portion of the budget that are the agencies under the -- and the budget chapters or lines that are directly under the Committee of the Whole. And the larger Committee of the Whole meeting will occur on May 28, where we will consider the entire budget after all the committees have finished their markups, which they are doing this week. In fact, I believe that Committee of the Whole today is the last one. Before we turn to the report, which all the members have, I will call on Mr. Cash to call the roll to determine whether there's a quorum.
Chairman Mendelson.
Present.
Councilmember Alexander. Councilmember Alexander. Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Bonds. Councilmember Bonds. Councilmember Bowser.
Here.
Councilmember Catania.
Here.
Councilmember Che.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Grosso.
Here.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Here.
Councilmember Orange.
Justice.
Councilmember Orange. Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. As I said, all the members have a copy of the draft report that was circulated yesterday. I am going to try to summarize this quickly. The Committee of the Whole is charged with oversight over the performance and annual operating capital budgets of approximately 20 agencies. Of these 20 agencies, in the mayor's budget, they comprise a total of $1.3 billion in gross funds and approximately 1,588 full-time equivalent employees. In order to review the mayor's budget proposal, determine the wants and needs of each agency under its jurisdiction, and provide the public with an opportunity to comment, the Committee of the Whole held budget hearings for each of the agencies under its purview. The committee received hours of testimony, both from government and public witnesses. The committee also received written statements. In fulfilling our prescribed oversight role for the fiscal year 2015 budget, the Committee of the Whole has been pleased with the cooperation of the executive and individual agencies in gathering and assessing information about the proposal. The committee has listened to extensive testimony from the public and agency heads to better understand the operations and needs of various agencies. Having thoroughly reviewed the mayor's fiscal year 2015 budget proposal, the recommendation before us, if adopted, the committee believes that the recommendations contained herein provide each agency under its purview with the funds necessary to fulfill its core mission and represent the policy priorities that best serve the people of the District of Columbia. I am working off of the summary in the report, and I'm on page 15. That's Roman numeral 15. Under the capital budget, that's specifically under the Committee of the Whole, with regard to the council of the District of Columbia, the Johnny Wilson Building would see a reduction of $175,000 from the mayor's mark. The Office of Municipal Planning would see no change from the mayor's mark. The Office of Zoning would see $175,000 added to its mark. And the University of District of Columbia would see no change in its mark.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
May I ever so respectfully ask where we are? I have the Committee of the Whole report.
Well, I'm working off of page roman numeral 15 in the summary.
I want to be able to follow. Roman numeral 15. Committee transfers?
Well, that's where I was going next.
Okay, thank you.
Which is that in this report, we accept the transfer of just under $123,000 in the Committee on Government Operations for the cost of adding an attorney-adviser position in the Office of Labor Relations and Collective Bargaining. OLRCB is under the Committee of the Whole, even though it is within the Office of the City Administrator, which is within the Committee on Government Operations. Also, in this report, we transfer $250,000 in local funds to the Committee on Government Operations for the purpose of funding Emancipation Day activities by the executive rather than the council. Turning to the recommendations for each agency, I will begin with the council's budget. I'm now looking at page 16, roman numeral 16 in the summary. The proposed fiscal year 2015 operating budget for the council reflects the mayor's proposal, less a $250,000 transfer out. The proposed budget fully funds the 3% pay increase given to most non-union city employees in April 2013, plus another 3% pay increase this coming October 1. Otherwise, the total proposed shows no change from our approved fiscal year 2014 budget. There are, however, internal changes to the council's budget. First, one FTE will be shifted from each committee budget to members' personal budgets. This reflects the actual staffing patterns. Existing committee chairs will see no change to their overall committee personal FTE total. Second, both the Office of the Budget Director and the Office of the General Counsel will be budgeted for one additional FTE. The Budget Director will hire a contract analyst, and the General Counsel will hire an attorney to work on code revision and the statutes at large. Transit benefits for council employees, an initiative started with the fiscal year 2014 budget, will continue in the FY 2015 budget. $100,000 is budgeted for this, which is a reduced amount, but which is closer to the demand actually experienced this year. The council has two small capital funds, a John Wilson Building Fund and an IT fund. The mayor proposed adding $500,000 in FY 2015 to the Wilson Building Fund, bringing its balance to approximately $1.6 million. This fund is available for small capital projects, such as improvements to the council chamber and the hearing rooms. The COW proposed FY 2015 budget for these capital counts makes only one change from the mayor's mark to redirect $175,000 of the mayor's addition to the Office of Zoning for IT upgrades related to the zoning rewrite initiative. With regard to the Office of the District of Columbia Auditor, the recommendation is the same as proposed by the mayor. Uniform Law Commission, there is no change from the mayor's mark. And the Office of Labor Relations and Collective Bargaining increasing just under $99,000 in CSG 12, and an additional $24,000 in CSG 14 to restore an attorney-adviser position that was erroneously eliminated from the proposed budget. And there are several recommendations, very quickly, that OLRCB continue to work with labor groups, and that OLRCB work more closely with the council in the transmittal of compensation agreements to avoid errors. With regard to the Office of Contracting and Procurement, there would be a decrease of approximately $300,000 in local funds, and shifting $375,000 from Program 4,000 to Program 9,000 to consolidate training funds. The reduction in PS is to reflect salary lapse. The policy recommendations, very quickly, that OCP work closely with agency heads, that OCP develop effective controls to preserve lines of authority from procurement staff located at agencies, back to the chief procurement officer, that OCP finalize plans for transitioning agency procurement staff to OCP procurement staff, and report these plans and any related budget impacts to the committee before the end of this fiscal year 2014, that OCP continue engagement with all relevant labor groups, OCP post all-new vacancy announcements on the DCHR's website as soon as possible. The Contract Appeals Board would see an increase of approximately $300,000 to create two new FTEs. These would be attorney positions to assist the -- two of the members of the Contract Appeals Board. There's a policy recommendation that, very briefly, the cab control its NPS costs. The Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, there's no change from the mayor's recommendation. The Innovation Fund with regard to fiscal year 2015 is being deleted, consistent with the mayor's errata letter. the mayor's errata letter. There are a couple of policy recommendations that are listed in the report, as well as in the summary. With regard to the Office of Budget and Planning, which is within the Office of the Chief Procurement Officer, there is no change in the mark as proposed by the mayor. There's a recommendation that the CFO work to finalize a contract for the store replacement system as soon as possible in order to fully implement BMAPs for the fiscal year 2016 budget cycle. The Office of Planning, there is some shifting internal within the agency, five positions from Activity 3010 neighborhood planning to Activity 2010, one position from Activity 3010 to Activity 2020, which is historic preservation, shifting four positions from Activity 3010 neighborhood planning to Activity 7010 citywide planning, and recommending adoption of the fiscal year 2015/2020 capital budget authority as proposed by the mayor. Couple of policy recommendations, very quickly, the OP reflect on its interactions with the community in previous years, and that OP work to ensure that the resources in historic homeowner grant program are sufficient to meet demand. Office of Zoning, a shift of $121,732 to move two positions to continuing full-time status, increasing the capital budget by $175,000 related to the zoning rewrite process, and recommendation that OZ ensure that BCA members are rigorously trained in legal standards for variances. The District of Columbia Retirement Board, no change from the recommendation of the mayor. Recommendations that the retirement board ensure the rapid completion of its data reclamation process, and recommend that DCRB continue to foster good communication and relationships with other executive agencies in the council. That is helpful when there's legislation before us that affects the retirement board. Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, no change from the recommendation of the mayor. Recommendations that DCRB continue to ensure the funding ratio stays at over 100%, and to ensure that the district's contribution, annual required contribution, does not increase exponentially over time. The Retiree Health Contribution Plan, recommending adoption of the budget as proposed by the mayor, and recommend that the OCFO look to the DCRB's practices in formulating assumptions for the trust fund, and recommend that the District Department of Human Services do more to publicize the post-employment and benefits available to qualifying district employees, since this is a recruitment and retention tool. University of the District of Columbia, recommending no change to the budget as recommended by the mayor, except to add 19 FTEs as budget authority. The dollars are there, but the budget authority for 19 FTEs needs to be added. There are several policy recommendations, recommending that the university complete its teach-out plan, and to work closely with the faculty labor union to move forward with the elimination of its academic programs that have already been identified in its strategic plan, and the corresponding reduction in force, so that this can begin, the notifications can begin August 2014. Recommend that the university begin planning for the community college's separate accreditation before 2016. Recommend that the university undertake formal steps to improve labor relations and provide an update to the committee by this September. The committee expects that $2.5 million enhancement for workforce development will be dedicated to that program, to workforce development, in addition to existing budget and resources. That's explicit in the report. Recommend that the university develop more realistic enrollment projections going forward so that reliable data, rather than historical numbers, can be used to plan for future budgets. Recommend the university implement planned tuition increases no later than the upcoming spring semester, and regular predictable increases thereafter for each fall semester. These measures require prior planning, that they be implemented months, in some cases a half a year, before the start of the semester in which they're expected to take effect. And that's what these recommendations get to, that the university has not been doing that. And recommend that the university work with their agency fiscal officer and the Office of Budget and Planning, and the mayor, to present more detailed information on the university's budget and in future budget books, including through the use of apprentices. With regard to the University of the District of Columbia subsidy account, recommend adoption as proposed by the mayor, and the remaining items, I believe, are also recommended as proposed by the mayor. That's debt service, the Johnny Wilson Building Fund, which is a different fund than that which I spoke of earlier, workforce investments, master equipment lease purchase program, again, recommending as proposed by the mayor, the Emergency and Contingency Reserve Fund, no change, Pay-as-you-go capital fund, no change, district retiree health contribution, no change, and a recommendation by the mayor. I move the recommendations.
Mr. Chairman.
Fully set forth in the report and as summarized by me. Mr. Grasso.
Thank you very much, Chairman Mendelson. First, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for the hard work that was done to prepare this markup today. I would also like to highlight the committee's policy recommendations and expectations that the University of the District of Columbia allocates the $2.5 million enhancement for workforce development at the community college, in addition to its existing budget and resources. I would also hope that UDC will post on its website the most recent KPMG audit reports for both FY 13, FY 12, FY 11, and FY 10, in order to be more transparent to the public. I'm committed to advancing workforce development in the District of Columbia. First, we must analyze how agencies spend, the $100 million in public dollars that are allocated to educate our residents, prepare them to be employed, and assist them with finding meaningful employment. I want to thank Councilmember Bowser, who worked closely with my office and with her committee to include in their committee budget report an additional staff member at the Workforce Investment Council to focus solely on cross-agency spending of literacy, numeracy, and adult training dollars. This is important because we are at a turning point in our city. Officials, educators, and advocates are starting to work together to address how we are failing district residents. We are realizing the need to connect Point A, education, with Point B, jobs, a path that has either not existed or been broken for far too long. The University of the District of Columbia and the Community College are in the prime position to use this $2.5 million in workforce enhancement money to be the example of how workforce development programs can and should work in our city. Second, I am pleased that we were able to increase the budget for the Contract Appeals Board to hire two full-time equivalent staff attorneys. The Board has done an excellent job handling backlog cases while clearing their docket of new cases. Currently, there are three judges who are staffed by only one attorney. The addition of two staff attorneys will enable the Contract Appeals Board to perform at full capacity, which is necessary at a time when we are seeing an increase in district government contract and procurement litigation. Lastly, I need to express for the record my concerns about the executive's reliance on the Office of Contract and Procurement's reforms to save the district 8% in 2016. As we know from both OCP's testimony and the executive's statement in the May 9 errata letter, the estimated savings from agency, contractor, and procurement reform will only add up to about 2%. Procurement reform is part of a longer list of savings, but we have not seen concrete totals. OCP is currently in the midst of their reforms and still have a long way to go to hire and train all the staff they need to be successful in this savings endeavor. I do not believe the mayor or the CFO's actions represent responsible budgeting, and I fear that the long-term ramifications will be detrimental to this city's financial stability. Conclusion, Mr. Chairman, I want to note that I support this committee's recommendations and concerns, and look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues to make this a fiscally responsible and transparent budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me commend you for the tremendous amount of work I was just reading through here, and I was wondering how you find the time to do all of this, so I really commend you, quite frankly, for the thoroughness of the report and pointing out certain things. I'm very disturbed about the budget for the University of District of Columbia. It's not your fault, not the council's fault, but the university, starting with the control board, has been sent down, down, down into a tailspin with the selling of the radio station. We were trying very hard to make UDC most students first choice, rather than the last choice, to the point now where it is basically the last choice for too many students in District of Columbia. When you start talking to students in charter schools or traditional public schools, missing UDC, like they like thumb your nose at you because the reputation of our university is plummeting. And partly the reason it is plummeting because the business community, other members of the academic community don't see the support of the mayor and the council. And I know how it works down here. If I want to propose more money, or you want to propose more money, I got to identify where it's coming from. And I've been doing all the lack of human services, and I don't have any idea where to get the money from. But I wanted to point out that the Board submitted a supplemental to the mayor of $21 million, $21 million. They've had to reorganize the university, had to eliminate certain courses in direction. The university has an excellent nation program, but it needs to be expanded. And I'm just pointing it out to us so we know the attitude. The mayor did not fund that $21 million. He only took $2.5 million in the budget. And I've talked to the mayor about this, and I know his commitment, but it didn't show $100. So I guess what we can try to do for next year, start early as a council, lobbying the mayor and his people to put that money in the budget. UDC, in the views of some people, is being treated as a stepchild. I have my degree from the university, so I'm an alumnus of UDC. I'm a graduate of two historically back institutions, LeMoyne College and Fifth University. And UDC needs to be enhanced financially. It needs to gather the stature that we wanted to gather by supporting it. So I just want to point this out, Mr. Chairman. I have no recommendations about where the money comes from, but I know that the mayor should have sent more over here for our great university. And the mayor needs to strengthen the Board of Trustees at UDC, people who are sincerely, they are interested, but sincerely interested in the welfare of our higher education. And finally, Mr. Chairman, during this upcoming year, I'm going to work hard as I can to figure out, help us all figure out how I can eliminate tuition at our community college. The biggest barrier for African-American students is finances. They drop out of school because of finances. Some academics assure. We should have no barriers for our high school students in both charter, private schools, and public schools. So I wanted to thank you for your diligence in this area. And so this budget is just a reflection of the mayor's problem and not you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Councilmember Bowser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank you and thank the staff for all their hard work. Additionally, I wanted to thank my own staff, who put together our Committee on Economic Developments report, and all the committee members who supported our efforts. We thank you. I did have a specific question about Title VI, subtitle E, in the Integrated Premium Transit System Amendment Act of 2014, which seems to speak pretty specifically to the streetcar procurement. And I'm just wondering about the kind of the ad hoc nature of these changes, and wanted to ask you to clarify what exactly this will allow.
Very simply, and we did not give a lot of attention to this because we did not make changes from what the mayor had submitted, and we did not look at the transportation aspects. I believe this was referred to both the Committee of the Whole and the Committee on Transportation and the Environment. And as I'm sitting here, I do not know if the Committee on Transportation and Environment commented on this, or what their comments would have been. But we were interested in the sections of this subtitle that relate to procurement, and we found that they were not objectionable.
Okay, it would appear that they're defining what construction means, particular to transit systems, which, you know, doesn't seem to be problematic. They're also adding the ability for a bidder to offer more in his or her response than what the RFP calls for, and it seems to codify that that's okay. And again, you know, on its face, that doesn't appear to be a problem. But it does speak to this very large procurement of up to $1 billion that we're going to spend on the streetcar system, and making sure that we have not only the right procurement vehicle, but the right people who are working on this very important procurement in the months ahead. So I just wanted to note that we're making some changes to the process, and we should follow it very, very closely.
Yes, and I'll be happy to talk with you further about this between now and May 28. As you know, the council members are getting together next week in formally, in a work session, and all of these issues are on the table at the work session, to the extent that members have concerns. Thank you, Councilmember Bowser. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Orange?
Yes, I have an amendment. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask this body to delay the transfer of the emancipation funds from the council to the executive for one year. And the reason being is that 2015, there will be a number of milestones. One is the 15-year anniversary of Carol Swartz and myself introducing legislation making DC Emancipation Day a private legal holiday. It will be the 10-year anniversary of my legislation making DC the only DC public legal holiday. It will be the 153rd anniversary of DC Emancipation Day, and it will also represent the 150th anniversary of the assassination of President Abraham Lincoln, which will occur on April 15, a day before our activities on April 16, which would provide us a golden opportunity to have a very exciting and a very rewarding Emancipation Day. It also, next year, marks the opening of the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, and it's also the 150th celebration of the Grand Review Parade of 1865 that I know former council member Frank Smith has talked to you about. If you look in the amendment that I've passed out, you'll see this year we are able to generate on the front page of the Washington Post Metro section, "A Special Day in DC." And the fact that we will have a new administration coming in, that administration will be focused on getting their cabinet together, going through confirmation processes, and this particular emancipation next year needs to be worked on now. We have the opportunity to get President Obama to be the keynote speaker at the breakfast. We have the opportunity to get Lonny Bunch, who is the head of opening the National African-American History Museum, to be a keynote speaker at the brunch, and also to headline the concert with Stevie Wonder. Now, you can't wait until January to make those arrangements. You know, permits need to be secured now, facilities need to be secured now, and I also see that you have here only $250,000. We have a group in place, an independent group, that's ready to raise a half a million dollars because of the significance of 2015. We will not see 2015 again. And to delay this for one year, because as I've indicated to you, I do believe that it should be with the executive branch. The only reason why I came back to the legislative branch is because the executive branch dropped the ball. And let me close by saying the executive branch dropped the ball again this year, because if you note, Mr. Chairman, what you participated in, there was nothing this year about Loretta Carter Haynes. Yet last year, we started the Loretta Carter Haynes Emancipation Day Awards Program. This lady is the keeper of emancipation. There was nothing said about her at all this year. If you look at this program, you'll see the council is excluded. You'll see that I'm excluded. That's fine, but this is the mindset of what we're dealing with. And even this card here, the council's not included on this. Everyone else is being recognized. This is coming from the other side. It's as though we don't even exist in this process. And the only reason why we're here today is that this is a situation about this whole permits that was generated by the executive branch. This council stuck to the $350,000 budget. It followed all the procedures that were placed before us by going through the mayor's task force. And mind you, on April 9, we received the mayor's order to proceed, two days before you called me, and I have a two-minute recording, if you'd like to hear it, refresh your memory, where you said the mayor would actually absorb the costs, and we could proceed. And then on the evening of April 15, you called me the day before the event and says the only way we can proceed is if the only way we can proceed is if you agree to give this back to the mayor. And I said, tell the mayor whatever he wants to hear. You know, we need to move forward because we would be sued out of the gizmos because we had already established contracts and received all these approvals.
Your time is expired.
Well, yeah, I know my time is up, but this is a very important issue, Mr. Mimison, that I least think I should be able to at least finish this report. So in any event, you know, if I can just have a quick 30 seconds.
No objection.
This kind of reminds me of Walter Payton, the great running back for Chicago Bears. Run up and down the field all those years for the Chicago Bears. They make it to the Super Bowl, and it's time to get the touchdown, Mike Ditka called the refrigerator's number and let William Perry, the refrigerator, run in and get the touchdown. Why did he do it? Because he could. And Walter Payton died without ever getting a touchdown in the Super Bowl, and everybody knows all the work he did. So in this case, we got Loretta Carter Haynes, did all this work, and there's nothing here to resemble her or to even acknowledge her work in this process. And to delay this one year is no sweat off of anyone's back, other than you cut a deal with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Orange. If this could be circulated, please. I'm going to not accept this, and I would ask that members not vote for this. And I would also like to note that there are no signatures on this amendment that have been, has been circulated. And in talking with members, I believe that a majority of them continue to be where they were when I spoke with them about this on April 16. The issue before us is not about Emancipation Day, nor is it about how much money should be committed to Emancipation Day. The issue here really is about whether we honor our word. And fundamentally, that's what it is. And let me just be frank about it. These are the facts. And what I'm circulating right now is a copy of an email that I sent to Councilmember Orange on April 15, immediately after my conversation with him. And it was only after my conversation with him that I then spoke with the mayor and agreed that we would make this transfer. And the email to Councilmember Orange is very clear that the agreement was that these funds would be transferred to the executive for fiscal year 2015. On the back of this email is a clipping from the Washington Post that reported on this deal. At the time that the deal was made, the press wondered whether, in fact, we would go forward with the parade. And Mr. Orange is quoted as saying that he's glad that we're at this point, we're glad that, he's glad that the executive is recognizing that this is a government holiday, and stating publicly his agreement with the agreement between the mayor and the council. And I would also like to note that on April 16, I spoke with all but two members of the council with regard to whether they would agree with this agreement. I wanted to make sure that it was not me alone, or me and Councilmember Orange alone. And of the 10 members of the council with whom I spoke, every one of you agreed that you would support returning Emancipation Day to the executive. So this is really a question of whether we honor our word and our commitment, and fundamentally, in representing the legislative branch to the mayor, only after Mr. Orange said to me that he would agree with this, that he would abide by the agreement, did I say to the mayor that we had a deal, that the mayor would absorb the costs this year, and we would transfer the dollars. This is, again, not about, this is not about Emancipation Day. If anybody's watching and wondering whether Emancipation Day is at risk, it is, that is not the issue. It is not, and that is not the issue. It's about whether this is an executive function, and actually, more fundamentally, whether, having made an agreement that all the members were aware of a month ago, whether we are going to stand by our word or not. So I do not support this amendment and ask that members did not vote for it.
Mr. Chairman?
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councilmember Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to fully disclose that I don't recall having a conversation with you, but I do recall having a conversation with Councilmember Orange. And I did tell him that I would support it. I think he's done a great job with Emancipation Day, and I want that to continue. But I had not been given the information that Councilmember Orange agreed for the executive to take this over in 2015. And I think in all fairness, Councilmember Orange, you didn't tell me that. So in light of that, that you agreed to it, and you spoke to the chairman about that, I can no longer support this. I do want to continue with Emancipation Day wholeheartedly. But if the two of you agreed for the executive to take this over, then I think in all fairness, you need to stick to your word. And I just want an explanation as to why you've changed and made this decision, because, I mean, it'll still be all of the milestones that you mentioned here. Nothing's going to change about that. Next year, if the executive takes it over, it will still be your 15th anniversary, and I think that should be acknowledged. So I really don't, I don't understand the rationale of why you, I'm not hearing why you want it to stay with the council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair to you, to respond to your question.
Would you keep the clock going, please?
The bottom line here is this call was made to me on April 15, or communicated to me a day before the event. Now, this does not, I mean, even in pure contract law, when you're cutting deals, someone sticks a gun to your head or makes you do something under duress or coercion, it's not deemed acceptable arrangement. At that point in time, you got to remember, on April 8, we presented to the full council the entire arrangement for DC Emancipation Day. The next day, we received all the permits and the executive order. And then the mayor says, we got to pay $116,000. It had, in over the 15-year period, we've never paid for police. We've never paid for fire in EMS. But we paid for the other things. Mr. McDuffie helped us out with DGS. We paid for DDOT. We paid for National Park Service. So there was no expectation. If there had been an expectation, that's what this is really all about. It came because the mayor, after providing permission, after providing all the permits, then the day before the event is to take place. When we've executed contracts with BET and with the National Park Service, with the fireworks people, they say we're going to cancel this function unless you agree to give it back. That's how it happened. So that's not what's being stated. And then, once again, Mr. Mimison isn't being totally truthful, in my view, because, you know, he has this message that he left me. I guess you can't hear it, but it's the April 11, when you called me and the mayor told you that he would absorb the costs. And you said, there's no doubt in your mind, the same thing was told to the council secretary, and we proceeded on. It wasn't until the 15th that you came back with saying, well, they will absorb it only if you give it up.
Mr. Orange, your time is expired. Mr. Berry?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Berry and then Councilmember Bowser.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have no knowledge of what agreement was made. It might have happened while I was recovering from my illness and wasn't around, so I don't have any knowledge of it. So I don't consider myself a party to it. I have talked to Mr. Orange, and as I understand what happened, I can't determine his state of mind and being at that time, except I got the impression he was against the wall, that the day before the events were supposed to go on, the contracts had been signed, and if he didn't agree, we'd have had a lawsuit, we'd have a messed-up emancipation parade, Emancipation Day. And so my view is...
I'll put you on the list.
It's not a struggle between the council chair and Mr. Orange. I think each of us can, at some point, get further information and change our minds. Now, I handle people, I handle it differently. Somebody put a gun to my head, I handle it differently than some of you. You know, I dare him to shoot. And it's true in that bit, but he handled it that way. He felt compelled to say yes when he should have said no. Because if he had said no, the event would not have taken place. We'd have been embarrassed by doing that. So I agreed to support Mr. Orange only because he went in great detail with me about the dynamics was going on. I don't like to be stuck up. He doesn't either. And I'm surprised that Mayor Gray did that. He usually not a stick-up artist. And so I'm going to support Mr. Orange unless the dynamics change up here somewhere or another.
Let me just note, if I may, Mr. Berry, there were two members with whom I did not speak. You and Mr. Evans were the two with whom I did not speak. Everybody else I did talk to on April 16, or in the case of Mr. Wells, on April 17. Let me also be clear, there was, if you will, a negotiation. I went to the mayor's office, and we went back and forth. And I argued strenuously that the executive was too late in giving us costs, estimates for what the agency costs would be. And the mayor was very clear that those were going to have to be covered. And if you look at the legislative language that the council adopted last year, it was clear then that the agency costs were to be included. This was a negotiation. And when I went back to Mr. Orange, he did not have to say yes. He did say yes. And the email reflects that, because it was important that be memorialized. He did not have to. I do not know that the event would have been canceled. Would the mayor have wanted that? I don't know.
It was already being reported as canceled in the news.
Orange, you do not have the floor.
It was already being reported as canceled in the news.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Bowser?
I, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I want to just jump in and here say, because I am a great supporter of the Emancipation Day holiday and the activities that surround it, and I'm looking very much forward to working with everybody to make sure that it's a big and meaningful celebration. I did have the opportunity to speak with you, and I lent you my support then, as I do now. My question, however, because I think Mr. Orange raises some very good questions about logistics, because there is an enormity of planning that goes into these events, and there's some milestones that will be hit in the next year. And I'm wondering if you and Mr. Orange could work together on language that would make it clear that Mr. Orange or the council, however you decide, can work on the planning events, all the way, of course, through this fiscal year and in the first quarter of 2015, to make some planning arrangements, to set aside a budget that could be promptly turned over to the next mayor. That would, in fact, not delay planning and make it clear that Mr. Orange would have, or however you assign, would have the authority to make some of those plans. It seems to me a reasonable way to move forward that would not disadvantage the planning for the events of next year.
Absolutely. That could even be included as a drafted as a subtitle. Councilmember Catanha? Is there further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Orange.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a question as to why in this bill it's $250,000. Let's assume the mayor's number is right, $116,000 for all these so-called costs. So $116,000 from this measly $250,000, you might as well, you know, forget about emancipation, and you might as well forget about even meeting the challenge of all the milestones next year. I thought the budget was $350,000, but now you're talking about $109,000 for emancipation? No, you don't have to include me in the language. I'm not going to be a part of that. You know, I can jump out right now. I mean, you're already setting it up, setting it up for it to be absolutely nothing. If the mayor is telling you, and he sent that document down, down to us after he had given us the permit, $116,000 right now, you know that right now going in. And yet, you're talking about a measly $250,000? What kind of planning can you do with that?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Berry?
Chairman, thank you very much. I want to thank Ms. Bowser, very thoughtful suggestion, indicating what her philosophy is about how you resolve problems rather than have confrontation and conflict, you have some to govern this on it. And it doesn't get us anything for us to go through what we call in the streets, he said, she said, kind of stuff. So, man, I really want to commend you, and I hope we take her advice. I got the impression that the chairman would take her advice and work on the planning part of this up into January, and then you can deal with it after January and make sure it happens. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
What can you do with $109,000?
Mr. Orange, you're not recognized, and you just spoke.
I raised a question to you, and I didn't get a response. How did it get, this $250,000?
The amendment is before us, and you've not been recognized this time.
Mr. Chairman, I did ask the question.
Councilmember Alexander?
I just have one more question. What was your rationale to shift to the executive?
My rationale was pretty simple, because when the mayor suggested it, I disagreed with him. You're asking me to speak to the negotiations. In the course of the discussion, he said that he would absorb the costs, that he was trying to get the council to pay, which he estimated at about $116,000. And I said, if, he said he would absorb the costs if the responsibility would be transferred back to the executive. And I said that I thought that was possible and that I would talk to Mr. Orange. And it was after I talked to Mr. Orange that I then got back to the mayor and said that that would be a deal.
So...
And that's reflected in what I circulated.
He would absorb the cost from what it, I think it cost us close to $400,000?
No. The council spent roughly $340,000 this year, and the costs that the mayor was saying that the agencies that we should pay were an additional, he said $116,000. I don't believe that number was accurate, and I don't mean by that to disparage the executive. There was some double counting, for instance, of the Department of Recreation costs, because those were included in the $340,000 that we paid. And I also believe that some of those costs were overstated. We did not have a bill. And I don't want to perpetuate this discussion, but in working with Councilmember Orange, he had bills from certain agencies. For instance, Department of Parks and Recreation had sent a bill of $10,000 to the secretary. The secretary then encumbered $10,000 out of the 350. We did not have that for MPD. We had, if I remember correctly, an estimate of $60,000. $60,000. I think that's way too high. But all of this is the day before, and so...
So the $250,000 will complement whatever the executive is going to pay?
Yes, that's what I think. And we can also be clear about that.
Well, how can you say that when it's nowhere in the budget?
Mr. Orange, I'm recognizing members in order, and I believe, I believe Councilmember Alexander was the last to be asked to be recognized.
I want to speak one final time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berry, final time, and then Mr. Evans.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a point of order? I did, in my...
No, you can't have a point of order.
A point of information?
And the reason why you can't have a point of order is because...
I raised a question as to why is it $250,000? And I believe that I should be able to get a response. In my three minutes, I raised a question to the chair. Mr. Chairman, could you please explain why is it $250,000?
I'll give you an answer, Mr. Orange, but the $250,000 is not the issue of your amendment. Council control is the issue of your amendment. My answer to you would be this: If the council wants to look at the amount, we can look at that amount in our discussions next week. We are sitting down to go over all of the budget, and I think it would be quite in order for us then to look at whether $250,000 or a different amount should be what we put in the final budget. What is before us today is, with the amendment before us, has to do with deleting from the committee of the whole report, as I circulated it, the transfer of the money to the executive. Mr. Berry?
Ladies and gentlemen, let me just make an observation. It seems to me, as you said a few minutes ago, Ms. Orange, that these discussions can take place about whether or not there's too much money, not enough money. But more importantly, if the planning is going to occur between the council and the executive, with the council taking the lead, but in January, if it's not enough money, the next mayor can reprogram money to it. And I'm confident who that mayor would be, but also I'm confident that that person would be open to making things work. And so I guess my question to you, did you accept Ms. Bowser's recommendation that you and Mr. Orange work on planning?
Yes, I did, that I will work with Mr. Orange, of course. And I can't remember if she said, or I kind of elaborated that we could do a subtitle, and I'm more than willing to do that.
Let me ask Ms. Orange. Let me ask Mr. Orange, since it seems like everybody's on the same page, is this amendment necessary?
Mr. Berry...
I'm a strong ally of yours.
To the chairman, to Mr. Berry.
It's my turn.
For the past three years, it's always seemed like we've been on the same page, and that's what the problem is. This committee that had oversight over this went through the mayor's process. In January, we met with the mayor's task force and all the agencies around the table. They told us what we had to do. We left that task force meeting and met with the National Park Service. Within a week, the National Park Service sent us a bill for $5,577, and they itemized what police officers would be on duty. Then we went back to the mayor's task force in March, and they said, "Okay, now what about electricity and water?" Work it out with, I believe it was DCRA, and they gave us approval. That's the process that you use in the District of Columbia. This has nothing to do with the mayor. It's going through a process that's set up for these type of events. And when you receive approval, that's it. And then, the final piece is when you receive the mayor's executive order, and in the order, it states that the council of the secretary of the council of the District of Columbia and the chairman of the Committee on Business and Consumer Regulatory Affairs shall proceed. That's on April 9th. And so then, to get something on April 15th indicating that all of a sudden there's $116,000 and there are no invoices, every other agency sent invoice. We paid $10,000 to the Office of Cable Television through a memorandum of understanding. We paid, I think, about $9,500 to Lincoln Theater through a memorandum of understanding. That was the process. So when we had our report on April 8th, all bills had been received.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And following the discussion here is that my understanding that Mr. Orange and Mr. Mendelson have reached an agreement whereby the council will be in charge until January 2nd, at which point the new mayor will then be in charge. And if so, can Mr. Orange amend his amendment stating that so we can all vote for it and move on? I think all of us...
I didn't realize that that was what anybody thought was an agreement. What is before us is the fiscal year 2015 budget. And in the report is a transfer of $250,000 to the Committee on Government Operations for the executive officer of the mayor for Emancipation Day. Mr. Orange has moved an amendment to strike that. That's what's before us.
Well, can Mr. Orange move an amendment to strike that until January 2nd in compliance with the discussion that took place here? It's a compromise between the two positions.
No, I will not support that, because that's not the agreement that was made, that was made after Mr. Orange agreed to it, and that most of the members, and you were the other person with whom I did not speak, that most of the members had said that they agreed to. The dollars will belong to the mayor, to the executive, the FY15 dollars. What I said, and this may be causing the confusion, is that we can write, if we want, in the Budget Support Act a subtitle that gives some parameters to Emancipation Day, if we want to, that also could speak to involvement by the council if we feel we need to do that. But that's what it would do.
So is there any compromise between yourself and Mr. Orange that would allow all of us to vote for that, rather than asking us to choose sides in this debate here today? That's what everybody's looking for, is a compromise.
I understand that. But Mr. Orange has an amendment to...
Chairman, can you come up with one?
No, I can't, because Mr. Orange is moving to strike, moving the dollars to the executive, and that was the agreement to which he agreed.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Che.
I move to close debate.
A motion to close debate, which is not debatable. Anybody who has not spoken will get to speak one more time. All those in favor of the motion to close debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Is there anybody who has not spoken who wishes to speak? We have the amendment before us.
The chairman, I think there may be some willingness from Mr. Orange to withdraw this and consider another, something else in the lines of what Mr. Evans, I'm losing track of what everybody just...
This amendment was before us.
What's before us is Mr. Orange's amendment, which was the second...
Mr. Chairman, I will withdraw that amendment.
Okay, the amendment's been withdrawn. We have the report...
That was before us now.
The report as circulated by the...
Mr. Chairman.
By the staff of the committee hall. Councilmember Bowser?
Would you consent, for the record, additional language or perhaps in a subtitle that would indicate, at a minimum, and maybe we can discuss more next week, that the council would be involved with the planning of next year's Emancipation Day through January, up to and including, you know, preliminary plans and invitations and budget that would be transferred to the next mayor?
What I'm writing down here is a subtitle that the council be involved in the planning up to January. I have no objection to that. What we'll do is we'll include that in the committee action and then work on the language. I have no objection to that. I assume there is no objection to that. Any further with regard to the report? All right, we have the report before...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilmember Orange.
Mr. Chairman, as we move forward with this, I would hope that we take a very objective look at the entire process of the emancipation activities and look at all these costs, and look at the past history, and come up with a workable budget in order to implement D.C.'s only holiday, D.C. Emancipation Day. Because if it's, once again, if it's $250,000 we're talking about here today, and if we were to use the mayor's number of $116,000, we're talking about $109,000 for this milestone emancipation that's taking place and all the other activities. So I hope that that will be part of the deliberations as well.
Yes, it will be. We have before us the committee of the whole recommendations, as, what do I say, as largely summarized by me and as fully presented in what was circulated to all of the members, with the addition in the committee action section, we will describe Councilmember Bowser's recommendation as accepted by the committee. The language will be worked out next week. All those in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Before we adjourn, I do want to take this moment, I believe every committee does this, to thank the staff on the committee of the whole that worked on this report. Evan Cash, who's the committee director, Tanika Miller, who's legislative counsel, Jessica Jacobs, who's legislative counsel, Renee Johnson, Brian Moore, and also, because this is the committee of the whole, even though the input is not as great as it will be, the budget office and the budget director. I want to thank everybody for their help with regard to this. The time is now 5:19 in the afternoon, and this meeting is adjourned.